Good morning. The time for convening has arrived. The Senate will come to order. At this time, I will ask all unauthorized personnel to exit the chamber. Is there objection? Where is the Senator from the 28th? Oh, okay. Recognized Senator from the 51st.
Good morning, Mr. President. After a careful reading of the Journal, it has been found to be absolutely correct.
All right. Thank you, Senator. Is there objection to dispensing of the reading of the Journal? Chair hears none, and the reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection for confirmation of the Journal? Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions introduced, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. Majority Leader, I think you have another motion you'd like to make, don't you?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion we dispensed with a roll call this morning.
The Majority Leader has moved that we move for dispense of the roll call. Is there objection? All right. We have an objection. All those in favor of the Majority Leader will say aye. All those opposed, no. Ayes clearly have it. Objection on roll call, Senator?
First of all, Mr. President?
We've already voted on that. Do you have a parliamentary inquiry, Senator?
Yes, Mr. President. Yesterday, Mr. President, we suspended with the rules, and we did not call roll. We colloquied with one another for, I don't know, probably an hour, accomplished absolutely no business, and then we adjourned, Mr. President. When I was calling for a special session, a lot of people said a special session was a lot of expense, a waste of money. And yesterday, in my 140 days of legislative session, I have never seen a waste of taxpayer money like we had yesterday. I would like to call the roll, because ultimately, everybody who's not here today is going to get a check.
Well, Senator, I appreciate your inquiry, and I appreciate your thoughtful consideration, but we've already dispensed of your objection. We took the roll, asked for yays and nays here. The ayes won, and so, you know, we'll have to take up your issue at another time. It is now time for the Chaplain of the Day. Recognize the Senator from the 34th. Come on up. For the pledge of allegiance and for the introduction of the Chaplain. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will you all rise, and let's pledge our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Now the Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag, precious, rigid, stand, wisdom, brush, moderation. Good morning, colleagues, for those of you that are here. I am so honored to be able to have the Chaplain for today. Most of you that's been around a minute or two know that I'm hail from Antioch Baptist Church North. Been there all my born days, and the pastor of the day has been raised there as well. So, we're deeply rooted at Antioch this morning, here in this chamber. I am so proud to introduce to you Reverend Walter Mobley, who is the pastor of... I couldn't remember. Victory Baptist Church. And he's one of the dynamic leaders. Our pastor Cameron Alexander helped get him started, put him on the right path, and now most everybody has their own sanctuary, their own church. And I am just so proud to have him come before us today and bless this Senate.
To Lieutenant Governor Burr Jones, and my friend and mentors, Senator Valencia C., and all the members of the Georgia Senate, staff, and visitors. Thank you for this opportunity to serve as Chaplain for the day. Let us pray. Almighty God, you know us. You know when we sit and when we rise, you perceive our thoughts from afar. You discern our going out and our coming in. You are familiar with all our ways. Before a word is on our tongue, Lord God, where we go, you are there. We cannot flee from your presence. So, God, search us and know our heart and know our thoughts. See if there be any wicked way in us, and lead us in the way of righteousness. God, our relationship with you shapes our perspective on life. God, we pray that this legislative body, which has been selected by the people of this state, will accept the responsibility, honor, and privilege that you have given them. We pray as they deliberate over legislation, they will look deep into their hearts and consider how this will help improve the lives of all the citizens of this great state. God, we ask that you will be amidst this body, and that they look to you for guidance, wisdom, and knowledge to do what is right. Bless each Senator, their families, their staffs, and the people of their communities. Finally, God, bless all the people in the state of Georgia. Amen.
Okay. It is now time to introduce the Doctor of the Day. Recognize the Senator from the 32nd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess as a physician, I'm the default Doctor of the Day introducer today, and I wanted to introduce Dr. Kushtasai, who's an internal medicine physician, and he practices hospital-based medicine at Phoebe Putney in Albany. He also serves as the Assistant Dean for Medical College of Georgia's Southwest Campus. He's a 2016 graduate of MCG, and he returned to the region to lead his alma mater and train the next generation of physicians, and that's something we work on all the time, is getting our physicians to stay in rural Georgia. Additionally, Dr. Sae has experts in disease, expertise in disease prevention, and works to reduce health disparities in rural Georgia. He collaborated with Georgia Core to form the CDC-funded Georgia colorectal cancer control center, and serves as Regional Medical Director. They've screened thousands of people and prevented cancer in numerous patients in South Georgia. He's been recognized. I'm not going to read the whole list of his awards, but I hope that if you have any medical issues today, you'll go down and visit with Dr. Sae. Dr. Sae, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Senator, and thanks, everybody, for having me. Like the Senator was saying, I was a Medical College of Georgia graduate. I'm from Columbus, Georgia originally. I actually trained in Albany, Georgia, and I came back to lead the campus, and so, that's exactly what now I'm trying to instill in our students, to try to do the same thing. And so, if y'all need me, I'll be downstairs. Hopefully, you don't, but I'll be downstairs. So, thank you, guys.
Finished Senators who wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The time is now appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise this morning to draw your attention to a very strange whiplash-inducing split screen that has been unfolding during the time of our special session. On the one hand, at some point over the last week, I can't remember the exact day, there was a press conference that the governor did, I believe, with many other Republican legislators urging that we speed up a tax cut that was put into place to scale downward over a certain amount of time, and saying, oh, we've budgeted so conservatively and appropriately, and everything is so wonderful, so we need to go ahead and actually cut taxes sooner than we had even been anticipating, and, you know, probably also have more talk about one-time tax rebate giveaways to Georgia taxpayers. Well, then, I attended two hearings, you know, buoyed by this news that had been issued at the governor's press conference. I attended two different hearings on status updates of various state programs. One was a hearing by, to give us an update on SB 211, that's the newly organized literacy council that is charged with looking at things and dealing with Georgia's abominably low 33% ability to read on grade level rate among Georgia's schoolchildren. We also got an update on HB 538, which is sort of a bill, not quite a companion, but was part of the program to implement that. And the message came through loud and clear that we're engaging in some kind of magical thinking, in sort of saying, we want to do these things, but we have a plan that we're being told... being told will not work for the feds to fund it because the state appears to be resisting putting any skin in the game to see if we can have more Georgia children that will actually be able to read, which is a basic skill to succeed in an economy today and frankly over the past decades as well. Then, fast forward a day, I attend budget hearings yesterday, and there was a parade of agency heads and former Republican elected officials with a drumbeat on how dire the circumstances are in every single one of their agencies. They can't keep staff. Our salaries simply are not competitive. They can't compete against the private sector. They can't even compete against local governments. I'll just give you a couple things that we learned yesterday. At the Prosecuting Attorney's Council, from them, we heard that the vacancies are untenable and unsustainable in these positions. In the Northern Circuit, four out of seven positions are vacant, a 57% vacancy rate. In Patala and Western Circuits, it's 50%. There has been 25% average turnover over the past five years. They do not have competitive pay and cannot hire into these jobs nor keep people in them. That's the Prosecuting Attorney's Council. I thought we wanted to ensure safe communities. That's law enforcement. At the Department of Labor, we are a year behind in unemployment insurance appeal hearings because there aren't enough hearing officers. The average wait time is over three hours at the customer call center, and the calls abandoned from consumers are 52%. This also appears to be because, as was testified to by our former colleague, Georgia Department of Labor Commissioner Bruce Thompson, the system is actually set up to sort of boot people off after three hours. And, he was candid when he received a question from the audience about would we be in a better position today were COVID to strike again at the Department of Labor? And his answer essentially was no. Secretary of State, Attorney General, and Agriculture Commissioner all had similar stories. The Judicial Council of Superior Court Judges, their compensation ranks 49th in the country behind only West Virginia. And again, there was more magical thinking discussed, I think this was during the Georgia Department of Labor testimony, that apparently some idea that we have that the feds are going to do something for us to upgrade one of our infrastructure systems is never going to happen because, as we were told repeatedly, the state has put no skin in the game. Why on earth would we think that the federal government is going to come in and rescue us on our unemployment systems and our children's literacy when we're unwilling to put any money into it ourselves? Meanwhile, we have Kemp saying we need to cut taxes. Meanwhile, we've got a $16 billion surplus. Georgia's human capital and infrastructure is crying out for some investment to right some of these, and this was only a very few, of the abominable situations, and we have a $16 billion surplus to do it with. I suggest we get to work. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
All right. Thank you, Senator. Senator, I appreciate your comments, but next Senators come up, be mindful of the time limit that we've historically had on points of personal privilege. So, I let the Senator from 42nd run over a little bit, so that's okay. We've got some feisty folks in here this morning, so. All right. Senator from 50th, point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. December 7, 1941, a date which will live in infamy in the United States. Today's the anniversary of that, and I rise today on behalf of my constituents and the veterans that live in not only my district but throughout the state, and want to thank them for their sacrifices because they fought for the freedoms that we have today. Yesterday, we had an early study committee meeting about rural health care, which has a huge impact on veterans throughout the state. And hopefully, as a result of that committee, we are going to be able to accomplish some things that will be able to assist them. I want to thank all the senators that were present for that meeting. I also want to thank the senators that were here late last night at the appropriations meeting, which dealt with our judiciary, which dealt with our Secretary of State, and, you know, a lot of times when I'm out, people say, you know, thank you for your service. And when you really think about what that means and you think about what veterans have done to establish this great land and this great state, I don't think that's appropriate for us. Yes, we come down and we serve our people and we serve our constituents, but to equate that to service in the military and service in the armed forces, who literally put their lives and some paid the ultimate price to fight so that we have the ability to be here today, to be here yesterday, to do the people's work, I honestly think it's, it's not the right wording. So, today, on the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, I just want to thank all the veterans in the chamber. I want to thank all the veterans that are watching for their sacrifice and for allowing us the freedoms that we have today. And as we go out between now and when we adjourn, I want to challenge you to be the leaders that we are called to be and elected to be. There's a lot of rhetoric out there. There's a lot of partisan rhetoric, and our people look to us to control the narrative of the state, and it is our job to deliver the truthful message to those, to our constituents. We have a lot of work to do in this upcoming session. We are going to have to work together to accomplish a lot for veterans, for teachers, for first responders, for police officers. We've got a lot of issues, and there are some things that we will not agree on, but that doesn't mean that we need to spew hate or spew false rhetoric. We need to let the people of Georgia know that we come down here to represent their interests and their rights, and that we are, while divided on some issues, we are united on what makes Georgia the greatest state in the country to live, raise a family. And I just, I want to leave y'all with that parting challenge to go out in your districts and, even if it's just in the Christmas spirit, spread a little bit of hope for the future of Georgia because we've got a bright future and we'll continue to be prosperous as long as we stay on point with our message and stay on point with our priorities. And with that, Mr. President, I will yield the will.
Recognize the Senator from 53rd for a point of personal privilege.
Mr. President, thank you. I echo the sentiments from my fellow Senator from Northeast Georgia. You know, he and I both have a deep appreciation for veterans. Mr. President, he's absolutely right. Those veterans, you know, whether it be at Pearl Harbor, whether it be the European Theater, those individuals put up everything they had, their life, their liberty, their treasure, to fight for our freedoms. But right now, Mr. President, we've got 19 people and maybe more, whose their constitutional rights, their God-given rights, are being violated. Our ship in this state is sinking. We've got 10,000 people a day coming across our border, Mr. President. I got elementary schools back in Northwest Georgia who are spending three times their FTE dollars on illegal immigrant students because the Supreme Court says they got to teach them. Mr. President, there's plenty of problems in our state. We've got election machines that can be hacked. We're not doing anything about it. But yet, yesterday, we suspended the rules. We did not take roll. We engaged in colloquy. We talked about making coffee for generals, and we left. Mr. President, we're doing the same thing today. I look around the room, and I'm not so sure we have quorum. And to my understanding, it's 5-1.10 and 5-1.10B that says if a Senator isn't here, let him be held in contempt of this Senate. Mr. President, I ask that we call roll today, and I yield.
Recognize the Senator from the 9th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't quite know how to follow that, but I'm going to lighten up a little bit because I rarely lighten up up here. Clearly, those of you who are here didn't get the memo. Come on, what about ugly sweater people? I know y'all got them. You drag them out of the closet. So, let's try this again. I mean, God forbid, we have another special session, but let's try this again next year. Now, I'll make sure that the memo gets heard loud and clear. But I also want to take a moment, if you will, to indulge me in bragging about my children. And my children are educated out of our great university systems that we have here in the state of Georgia. They are both graduates of our fine Gwinnett County Schools out of Grayson, my district in Grayson. And as y'all know, my son graduated from Grayson. He is now at Georgia Tech. And his class and those class of boys that played the years that he was there and graduated, we were champs, we were state champs. So, Georgia Tech now has two state champs on their team, as my son Noah Collins and Jamal Haynes. They're doing fantastic, and we need to recognize when kids are doing good things. They have to keep up their grades. Georgia Tech is not an easy school. They have a very demanding schedule. So, just remember that. They do a lot to entertain you guys on Saturday afternoons. But I also have a daughter, Imani, and she is 22, and she will be graduating Georgia State with a biology degree. She has straight A's, and her graduation is next week, on the 14th, and I am extremely proud of her. So, I have two superstars. And just back circling back to Tech after over, I think, 10 years, they are now in a bowl game, and we will be joining them at the Gasparilla Bowl in Tampa. So, I really appreciate the work that Coach Key has done with that team to turn that program around, and I'm really proud of those kids. I'm proud of my kids, and I'm proud of all those kids that work very hard in our universities here in Georgia to excel. And with that, Mr. President, I yield the will. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to all of you. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize Senator from 29th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, again, dovetail off something that the Senator from the 9th and the Senator from the 50th were discussing because of what today is, December 7. I want to recognize my wife's grandfather, Gerald Yarborough, who was a proud career firefighter, but prior to that, he served in the United States Navy and served on the ship when the Japanese Imperial Army surrendered to the United States. And carried in his wallet throughout his career as a firefighter, a card that commemorated he, his presence standing on the deck of that ship witnessing that. And my wife and her family take great pride in it because of his history of public service that just permeates throughout our great nation. And I want to take pride in another man, my great uncle, Alto Cobb, who I never knew and who never knew me. Knew my grandfather well because that was his brother, but Alto went aggressively and excitedly and joined the United States Army at 19 years old. And at the age of 21 years old, when the Senator was up here speaking about the European Theater, my great uncle laid his life down in the mud of France under the direction of General Prushing because he appreciated public service and appreciated this great country that we live and serve in. All of us in this chamber, the 56 of us that occupy these seats, we're not going to agree every day on everything. And some days, weeks, and months, we're never going to agree on certain things. But I do want each and every one of you know that I appreciate you stepping out and offering up yourself for public service because there are days we walk out of this building with big smiles on our face, and there's days we walk out of this building bloody and bruised. But it's like I tell everybody, anybody in this chamber calls me, no matter where you are, you got a flat tire or a broke-down car, I'm coming to you, and I'm going to be there for you. It may not change what we think about each other when it comes to certain political issues or things like that, but I know where your heart is, and I appreciate that. And the influence of a great uncle that I never knew, that my mother told me about, whose photo hangs in my living room prominently at home that I look at every day reminds me that we're all here for something bigger than each of us. To those of you who are here in the chamber today, thank you. For those of you who are in the Capitol today in the budget hearings and other things, thank you. For our brothers and sisters over in the House doing their job, thank you. And to all of our relatives and loved ones who sacrificed their absolute last breath for this great country of ours, thank you. Mr. President, I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize Senator from 31st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to try and be brief. First, I do want to wish my entire family, everybody in West Georgia, Merry Christmas. All of you and your families, Merry Christmas, as you travel home, and Happy Holidays. During this season, one of the things that I know and notice and experience my constituents is the amount of families that are hurting, can't afford things, having trouble with their kids in schools, and basically just life. I think the number of, you know, families and friends I've, you know, that are having health issues, mental health issues because of the world we're living in, and I think the trauma that a lot of people are experiencing in the chaos in this world, I think, is only rising. But what I do find troubling is every time we hear from the minority party and they want to come down here and talk about what the governor's doing or what the governor's not doing, the number one thing that we can do for our constituents is provide relief. And I believe that's what Governor Kemp is attempting to do and will do, and will be successful doing it in the weeks and months to come. We did have appropriations meetings yesterday. I sat through most of those meetings, but not once did I ever hear any of these agency heads challenged in terms of, you know, these challenges they're having with federal dollars or not putting skin in the game. Where were those questions? Like, this well is very convenient for people to come down here and complain, but we never hear what are the alternative solutions to help Georgians other than just kind of, you know, come down here, say our piece, check our boxes so we can go home and send mailers out to tell our constituents we did our jobs. The Secretary of State was in our appropriations meetings, and I think some of us asked questions about QR codes and ballots and budgeting, and every single member of this body was invited to those appropriations meetings, but those questions weren't asked by some people in this room. We can come down here and make speeches, but if you really are doing the work, you're showing up and doing the work. Talk is cheap. And I know my constituents I represent in West Georgia, they demand more, they expect more, and I challenge them every day to hold me and every member of this body accountable. So, when we think about the people we represent and where they're at in life right now, this isn't about me, this isn't about you, this is about them. And if you're going to be genuine, and you're going to be intentional, and you want to represent your values, then do what you say you're going to do. This body is bigger than a little bit of the stuff we heard this morning, and I think it's the same. And I think it's a sacred body in the sense that Georgia leads the nation in so many different ways from the beginning of this country's founding. And I think the history, the very bad times that this state has experienced, to some of the really good times that we've seen, we need to keep that in the front of our minds every single day that we deliberate and work together as Republicans and Democrats. And, you know, I'm proud to work, obviously, with my party. I'm proud to work with the members of the minority party that do want to do positive, intentional things. But please, don't come down here and act like, you know, the governor and other leaders aren't doing anything when they are. And when you have an opportunity to challenge authority, then challenge authority. I know I do, and I will never back down from that. So, Mr. President, I just want to wish everybody in this body a Merry Christmas, happy holidays. And as the Senator from the Ninth said, go Jackets.
Oh, I'm letting a lot of things slide today, I tell you. Good old rambling wreck. All right, Senator from the Twenty-Sixth, point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas too. But some of you might not make it back. We are here right now. You heard the gentleman from the Twenty-Fifth talk about his health problem. For the last 12 years, I've worked on nothing but healthcare for rural Georgia, and I don't live in rural Georgia. I think about the times that I'd had health problems had not it been for me being around 15 minutes from a facility that could see by me. It ought not to be about your zip code where you live. For 50 years, we've had the votes where you could not pierce the CON. Excuse me. Somebody calling. I don't know whether it's from the divine or not. But we can do something about healthcare in Georgia. We have refused Medicaid expansion. We've got folks in Georgia who go to work, some work in the hospitals, and don't have enough money at the end of the day to pay the bill for health insurance. We send the money to Washington. In every state, you take Kentucky for instance, Senator McCollum State. Coal miners were dying because they couldn't get the healthcare. I represent the poorest county in the state of Georgia, Hancock County. When COVID hit, they were number one in deaths because they did not have healthcare. Rural hospitals are closing because they can't fill up the rooms. And CMS, who regulates Medicaid and all of the federal healthcare money, told the state of Georgia, you cannot do advanced dish payments. That's when the hospital administrator calls you about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night and says they can't pay the bills. And then you call the commissioner to see if you can get some money so they can pay the bills. The problem with healthcare is you all. That's what the problem is. You don't talk about it until you have a problem. And then when you have a problem, you got no healthcare. It is high time we talk about giving back money. But we can see about somebody in Tijuana or Somalia with telemedicine. But if you don't have a facility to do telemedicine, how do you help the folks that you represent? People choose to live where they live. If you live in rural Georgia, they live there because they enjoy the rural life. But the majority of our products that we sell in this state comes from rural Georgia. And those persons ought not have to have a problem when they get sick. The emergency room is not for regular healthcare. It's for emergencies. It's the most expensive healthcare there is. But yet, we got a half a million Georgians who don't have health insurance. And we have failed to expand Medicaid expansion to take care of these folks. But we can do everything else. Now, it's high time that many of you, and especially you rural legislators.
Senator, just give you a word of notice on time limit.
My time up.
You're almost there, man. You're almost there.
Well, Mr. Governor, that includes you too. We pierced the CON in the Senate. It didn't get passed in the House. But now is the time to make the CON part of Medicaid expansion discussion. Big hospitals get paid for those folks that don't have health insurance. So what do you expect from a rural community that has no money, has no large cooperation, to give money to the hospital to help pay the bills? We can resolve that problem. All we got to do is sit down and figure it out. Mr. Governor, I appreciate the time talking to my colleagues, which y'all need to understand, healthcare is real. And if you don't get the proper healthcare, you won't be here.
Thank you, Senator. And you are correct. The Senate laid on changing a certificate of need for rural communities, but we got to do more. I do agree, we got to do more. How we get there, we're gonna have to discuss, and then we'll do that come January. All right. This is a feisty bunch today now, I'm telling you. Good Lord. Senator, huh? I guess so. I guess I'll take credit for it. Senator from the Forty-Fourth.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I almost forgot, but senators, I rise today to congratulate the Clayton County United Negro College Fund Campaign Committee for their support and for their work on the United Negro College Fund for the past 40 years. And on this Tuesday, we will be celebrating the UNCF Awareness Day 2023 at the Jonesboro City Center. The United Negro College Fund has 37 historically black colleges and universities, a member institutions, 79 years old. But our campaign is about 40 years. I just happen to be the chairperson and get all the credit. But the people, the volunteers, are the ones who really do all of the work and all of that good work. And we have done that in Clayton County for 40 years. I just happen to be a graduate of one of the member institutions. But there are about 50,000 students annually that attend these universities. And we are so appreciative of all the work that the Clayton County Campaign Committee has done. So I want to congratulate them. We know volunteering is real hard. All of us do it. This Christmas season, as we celebrate the miracle birth of Jesus, it's all about sharing and caring. And all of us are on boards, and all of us this season will make sure that there's food on the table for the people, not only in our communities, but all across this state. We will make sure that every child has a toy. So we will be out doing all of that work, and we just pray that you, all of us, keep the stamina and the strength to go out and do the work of the people. So Merry Christmas, happy holidays, all that good stuff. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Senator from Thirty-Sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. As we're wrapping up the special session, I'd like to share a few remarks and give some more people time to push their button to come up here as well. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm for coming to the well today. I was first moved to come up here when I heard the comments from the Senator from the Fifty-Third decrying educating children who come from other countries and live in the communities of our great state. And one has to wonder what your worldview is when you don't think children should be able to access our educational system. What's the alternative? And by the way, their parents are working very hard in the industries of our state to bring to the market the fruits of their labor. Chicken and poultry being one of many areas in which immigrant labor is invaluable. So to decry the fact that our schools are required to educate these young people, it baffles me, frankly. Baffles me. We have concluded a very successful study committee on recruiting medical personnel for rural areas. And the final report that's being prepared, I want to acknowledge our chair, the Senator from the Fiftyth, for the work and the leadership that he gave that committee, as well as my colleagues on the committee. Very, very fruitful discussions. One of the many items that was lifted up around addressing health needs in rural Georgia is the fact that we have immigrants, God help us, from other countries who come with an array of advanced skills in the healthcare profession. We're going to be working to broaden the opportunities because we have people that have graduated and have practiced medicine in other nations and who come here and have a real challenge in putting their talents to work in the healthcare field. That's just one of many areas that we looked at. The question of the training and recruiting nurses, creating more access to the educational opportunities to become a skilled health professional. And I would say the rural areas of our state suffer tremendous challenges. And that is also the case in my district. We've had Wellstar close down two hospitals. One of them with 103 years of history of delivering healthcare to Georgians in Atlanta. So we have issues that we face in the health arena, in the urban areas, as well as in the rural areas. And I agree with my colleague who pointed out the dire necessity to move ahead with a true Medicaid expansion. Let us, as we leave the chambers today and go home to our families for the holidays, let us resolve that the session in the new year is going to be a session that actually engages with this issue of healthcare and join the other 40 states that have expanded Medicaid. 40 states, folks. We've got a lot we can get in the well and talk about, to the gentleman from the Thirty-First. We have, I think, second highest in the country rate of uninsured people in our state. This is not good. We still have a waiting list of 7,000 people on the developmental disabilities.
Time is getting close, Senator. Just give me your.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that timely reminder. So as I take my seat, recognize that tonight, the season of light starts. Jewish families here and around the world will be celebrating Hanukkah over the next seven days, eight days. And we, as well, will be moving into the holiday season for Christmas and New Years. And there will be, if you haven't heard yet, Judge Stephen Jones has called for a hearing on the maps on the 20th before Santa Claus comes. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll get back here and roll up our sleeves in January to do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator from Fifty-Third, do you have parliamentary inquiry?
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. President. Isn't it not true that the citizens of Northwest Georgia are heating their houses with wood today? And the Senator who just spoke, her constituents live in big high rises, 50 stories tall. So if she'd like my immigrants, she can have them.
All right, back on to points of personal privilege. Senator from the Seventh. Recognize Senator from the Seventh for a point of personal privilege. Senator from the Seventh.
Immigrants are people. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, this was my first session, my first opportunity to be a state senator and to serve my constituents of the Seventh District. And I have enjoyed working with my colleagues on the Democratic side and on the Republican side. I was proud to help introduce legislation that addressed common sense gun safety reform, expanding abortion rights, increasing the minimum wage, fully funding our public schools, and fighting to protect our voting rights. I also appreciate the Senator from the Fifty-Second for giving me my first hearing on a bill that would eliminate the unjust and discriminatory sales tax on menstrual products. I hope to pass that legislation next year. I also want to thank the Senator from the Thirtyth, who worked on a bill with me that I worked with on the National Guard with, and he was a co-sponsor on it. And it passed the State Senate. It was my first bill that I passed out of the State Senate. And I also want to thank the Senator from Thirty-First. I was on his study committee for truck driver shortages, where we worked to find solutions that would address the crisis of why we don't have enough truck drivers on the roads, whether it be increasing their wages or figuring out safer working conditions for them. I've also enjoyed, this part of the job that I really enjoy, is making sure that my constituents receive the resources and services that they need to thrive. One of the things I wanted to highlight was, and it's been very concerning, is the fact that a lot of my constituents will reach out to me because they were kicked off of Medicaid. They weren't able to get back onto Medicaid. They don't have healthcare access. A lot of constituents reach out to me about SNAP benefits and how they have, you know, applied months and months ago, and they haven't been able to connect with anyone. Earlier, our caucus chairwoman mentioned that our state agencies are underfunded. They are. They're severely underfunded. These people that work at these agencies are overworked. They have caseloads up to here. And I hear from a lot of my constituents, when they call the offices, nobody picks up. It just rings and rings and rings. They send emails, they never get responses. And so we have a dire situation with our state agencies where we don't have the staff to actually work on the issues that Georgians need help with. In fact, a woman that was. In fact, a woman that was nine weeks pregnant reached out to me and said that she was kicked off of Medicaid. She doesn't even live in my district. She lives in actually a Republican district. Reached out to me for help because she said, "I can't see a doctor and I believe I'm going to have a high-risk pregnancy." She texted me again at 11 weeks pregnant. She's like, "Senator Islam, I still haven't heard back on getting back my Medicaid." I worked with her, figured out, like, talking to, you know, talking to someone here, talking to someone there, emailing this person. She finally was able to get her Medicaid. I've worked with constituents where they're like, "Senator Islam, I am afraid sometimes I don't have enough food on the table." And their kids go hungry. That shouldn't happen in Georgia. That shouldn't happen in the richest country in the world. We have the resources to help people. Let's figure out how to, let's figure out how to address this crisis that we have with our underfunded state agencies. Because what else are we here for if not to help our constituents? So I just wanted to say, overall, we have more in common than what divides us. I know that we have partisan disagreements here and there, but a lot of the legislation that we pass are things that are good for all Georgians. And I hope to work on good legislation with all of you. And so with that, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. Thank you. I yield the will.
Senator from thirty-third, point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President, my fellow senators, colleagues, friends, and y'all. Today, I want to recognize all the veterans, including myself, for the day that was supposed to live in infamy, December 7th, 1941. I want to thank all the veterans who served then and who served subsequently since then. Myself, as I said, I am a retired veteran, and my father is a veteran. But he didn't fight in World War II, he fought in Korea. He fought army combat. You see, when the North Koreans and the Chinese pushed all the way down the peninsula and conquered most of the peninsula, MacArthur did a brilliant military strategy and cut their supply lines in half by going in through N-chung. Well, my father was a part of that group that went into N-chung and cut the supply lines. And today, we have a free Republic of South Korea. So I just want to thank all the veterans and also want to let the Senator from the fifty-third know, if you want coffee, I'll pour some for you, too. The only question I have is, would you like cream or sugar with that, sir? Thank you.
Recognize the Senator from the fifth for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to be here this morning, dear colleagues. I wasn't planning to say anything, but everybody's saying something, so I guess I might as well join. We live, we are one of the greatest countries in this world. I travel all around the world. And when you talk about the healthcare, we have the best healthcare system anywhere in the world. But the thing is, we don't have access. Not everybody have the access. You can say, "Well, you can go to emergency." That's not the healthcare, as my colleague says. So we got to do something about it. We have all these big budgets, surplus, I mean, we have all this rent fund, everything else we worry about that, you know, we're going to go bankrupt. If you look at, you know, 30-some years' history, we've done pretty good, you know, Democratic and Republican. And we worked together pretty good, too. Eighty-five, ninety percent of the bill that, you know, we sponsor, we cosponsor, we passed. We're doing great. We are very proud of what's going on, how we're serving our constituency as great, Mike, you know. But we got to remember one thing, anything we do that affect 11 million Georgian. So somebody from the 200, a couple hundred thousand people from Gwinnett, they elected me, and, you know, and that you already present around a couple hundred thousand folks. But you know what? It's great, we're serving our constituency. But we got to look at the entire state. We got to, anything we do, as I said, that affect every single Georgian, and we got to be mindful of that. And I guarantee you, all of our district, we have people that don't have healthcare. Shouldn't be that way. Shouldn't be that way. I've been to some of the poorest countries in the world, and they have the basic healthcare system. And people always ask me, you know, anywhere I go, sometimes, sometimes, time to time they ask me about their healthcare system, you know. I mean, they cannot imagine a country like the United States, people don't have healthcare. It's just, it's unbelievable. It's really unbelievable. We got to do something about it. Let's come together next session, let's expand Medicaid, or whatever we can do. And another thing, we have a lot of immigrant doctors come to this country legally, they're not coming, crossing the border. We bringing them to this country. We have a lot of healthcare in the state of Georgia, the doctors, they have experienced work years overseas. They come in, pass exam, and then they can get residency. There's a problem. We need to do something. We have, not only in Georgia, all around the country. A couple of months ago, I was in New York and I had met several doctors. They came in and they passed their test, too, but they couldn't get in, you know, residency. And one gentleman told me, you know what, I had a, I passed 23 years ago. I practiced for last 23 years in, you know, in a developed country. It's not an undeveloped country. But I can't get a residency over here, they say you passed too long ago. We should be embracing the people who experience, you know, get all this experience doctors. So I urge you, let's do something in the state of Georgia. As a matter of fact, I was talking to some folks in, at the New York, they're trying to do something about it, trying to get the foreign doctors to the, into their system so they can avoid, you know, they can, you know, have some folks in the rural part of the state that don't have the doctors as they needed. We can do, too. We can do some, we can use some of these healthcare professionals that come into this country legally, experienced doctors. Maybe we can put some restriction, whatever it is, they can practice in rural area, going through the American Medical Association, going through the medical board or something like that. So we can have some healthcare professional in rural Georgia. I may be elected from, you know, I'm elected from Gwinnett County, but I'm worried about the folks in South Georgia, in North Georgia, in rural area. So I really wish we come together, let's do something about the healthcare. Let's take care of the people of all 11 million that we have in Georgia. We have, you know, we have a great state. We are number one state in business. So let's make it a number one state for the people, for the people of the state of Georgia. Let's take care of the people, then we're going to stay number one. We don't have to get to number two. Thank you very much, appreciate, thanks for listening to me. All of you all have a Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. I recognize Senator from twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise before you. Yesterday, we had a joint Economic Development and Tourism Committee meeting, and Chairman Stevens in the House presented his sports betting bill, his draft, and then I presented a draft of a constitutional amendment to let the voters decide on casino gaming, destination resorts, horse pair mutual wagering, and sports betting. We're one of, there's 38 states, there'll be two more by January that have sports betting. So you'll have 40 states that have it, and we don't. So what I want to tell you is, the Senator from the twenty-fifth, 20% of the money goes to rural healthcare in the constitutional amendment. 10% from the Senator from the forty-fourth goes to historic black colleges. Now let me just tell you, the revenues on a conservative basis, if we did three destination resorts, one track, and we had sports betting, the conservative estimates are we'll bring in $900 million of revenue to $1 billion. So you're talking about 180 million to 200 million for rural healthcare and 90 to 100 million for historic black colleges. So we need to get behind this. It's time that we let the voters decide on this issue. We've talked about this for 10 years, and I think the voters want to have the right to vote on this. So we will be, you'll hear more about it, but we talked about the draft constitutional amendment yesterday, and I'll continue to tell you a little more about it when we go, I'll drop the constitutional amendment the first day of session in January. Also, I want to change subjects, and I just want to tell you, you know, I've been listening to everybody's comments, and we may disagree on some things, but we all agree we want to do what's best for Georgia, number one, and we all love our families. I've had a tough year this year. I lost a brother to pancreatic cancer, and I lost my dad three months ago. And I will tell you, this Christmas, I'm going to spend time with my family. I'm going to love my family. I'm going to enjoy being with them. We're going to eat some good food, and we're going to be grateful for what we've been blessed with. And I would ask all of y'all to do the same. And when we come back in January, let's work together to make sure we're doing the great things for the great citizens of the state of Georgia. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. I recognize Senator from thirty-fourth for a point of personal privilege.
Thanks, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, I rise for one particular reason, and that's to say thank you, colleagues. I've been in this chamber a pretty long time, and I have learned so much. But what I value most is health. So I'm going to start with health over everything else. Many of you have known me for some years. Yes, I'm a heart attack survivor, that's why I make sure on Go Red Day that if you guys don't wear your red tie, I'll bring you a red dress. I want you all to be serious about healthcare, mainly because health over everything else. If you don't have good health, you're having problems, serious problems. Now I will say that one of the things that I was really excited about was when I got an invitation to be a part of what was deemed as Obamacare. Yep, I had an opportunity to go to DC and meet with different people from all over this great nation. It was awesome. It was phenomenal. But little old me, from Clayton County, was chosen as one of those that were in the room. And one of the things I'll never forget is when our president at that time, he told all of us in the arena similar to this. When you all get back to your states, do me one huge favor. Let them know I do care. That's the president. He cares about us. He wanted to make sure we had healthcare and access to healthcare, not just for those who could afford it, but for every living soul. So as one of those who have had many, many challenges, and thank you all, because you all have prayed me through a lot of challenges, and even today, a little left is zero, but I'm still standing. I want you all to know that we should make sure that our districts, red, yellow, black or white, should all have access to healthcare. We could have done it a long time ago. We've been trying to have access to care, but if it was only because it was deemed Obamacare, let's take Obama out of it. Let's make sure our districts, our people, all Georgians have access to healthcare. That's simple. Just come together and say, yes, I agree. Health for everybody. Let's make it happen. It's been on the table too long, and we've raffled with it, and now I'm going to go back to the grandchildren saying, "For why?" Yeah, when they was little, I thought that was the cutest thing, but you know how grandparents are. But it is a serious matter, just making sure that each and every one of our districts, our constituents have access to care. Mr. President, I've had my say. Thank you so much, and I'll yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Recognize the Senator from the fifty-first for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as we leave here today, I want to just thank all of you for working so hard for the last seven days. We've come together right between Christmas and Thanksgiving, and I know you all are working hard back home in your districts. But I also want to call out the hard work that was done by the reapportionment committee and specifically the Chair and the Vice Chair of that committee. The Senator from the forty-ninth and the Senator from the fiftieth have worked hard for many, many weeks and brought together a map that I think we will be able to go forward with next year in the election. Unfortunately, the Senator from the forty-ninth was not able to attend today due to an unexpected death in her family. Her Aunt Sheila Cantrell passed away this week suddenly, and the Senator from the forty-ninth is on her way to that funeral as we speak. So I'd like to ask if we could give a moment of silence and stand in her honor and praise for the family.
Senator's request is a moment of silence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, the posture, or does any other senator which rise on a point of personal privilege? All right, Chair here and then. All right, the reason why we're here today is because we are waiting on the House to finish the maps there. They are still working on those. You know, we had concluded our business here in the Senate, and so I'm going to recognize the Majority Leader to have us stand in recess until we get in the, until the House can finish conducting their business. Majority Leader, you have a motion?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. It seems like we're always waiting on the House of Representatives to take action, but here we are, ready to do the people's work. Mr. President, I would move that the Senate stand in recess pending the receipt of a message from the House, and upon receipt of such message, stand adjourned, sign a die.
All right, the Majority Leader has moved the Senate stand in recess pending receipt of the message from the House, and upon receipt of the message, stand in adjournment, sign a die. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
All right, the ayes have it. We'll stand in recess. We'll stand in recess.